All right, we will call the Monday, December 11th, 2023, City of Mayor, City Council Meeting to Order. If we could please start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
No additions to Nightmare.
All right, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second. I'll say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. That will take us to public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comments, move to consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion, second.
Motion, second. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. So with that, we will jump right into our truth and taxation public hearing, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Each year, we go through our truth and taxation public hearing process. This is an opportunity provided for in state law that requires cities over 500 in population to present budget information, levy information to the public so that the public can come in and give input on the budget process. So, as with every year, I'll do a slideshow presentation on that. So what we'll plan to cover on this public hearing, we want to focus on the areas related to property tax levies. So we're not going to go into utilities and utility rates or anything like that. We'll cover some historical information on levies, rates, and the tax base, as well as some comparisons. And then we will talk about the 2024 levy, budget revenues, and expenses, along with the capital improvement plan and debt service schedule. And then after that, we'll take any public comments or questions that we might have from the audience. So to start off, just give the overall picture of what the levy is doing from 2023 to 2024 up there on the slide. And if you're following here live, we're going from this year's tax levy of $1,505,591 down to $1,348,276, or a difference, or a downward trend of $157,315, or 10.45% decrease from this year to next. General fund levy takes a dip downward, the CIP takes a dip downward, and our debt service portion of the levy takes a bit downward. And I'll get into more detail on that later. So first off, cover some historical information regarding the three areas that impact this: the tax levy, the tax base, and then the tax rate. So up here, I have some information regarding some of the historical tax levies for mayor, broken down between the general fund, the CIP, and the debt service levy. One thing to note is that the CIP didn't really get going until 2021, and that's where you can see a shift from the general fund levy, where it was getting up to about $750,000, and then at 2021, it dropped down to 481, and the big drop, and that was moving monies into the CIP, as well as some other changes involved with that. So over time, we had the CIP going up there, and then the general fund stabilizes, as you can see there. And that's the entire purpose of a CIP, your capital improvement plan, is that the large volatile expenditures on various pieces of equipment, whether it be fire, or payloader, or dump trucks, or everything like that, you're taking it out of the general fund, and you're putting it into the CIP, so that the general fund becomes purely operations type of spending, and you're not getting those large one-time expenditures that hit, that would normally hit the general fund, and it would cause your budget just to vacillate up and down depending on what's being purchased in that particular year. The other point of the CIP is that you're putting money away each year for future expenses, so you don't have to issue debt in the form of equipment certificates in order to buy various pieces of equipment that you might not have the reserves to purchase right on hand. And in doing so, you save in having to pay interest on those equipment certificates, those loans. And then you don't have to pay financial advisor or a bond attorney to issue that debt on our behalf. So the idea is put money away now, so you can buy at cost, and you're not having all those extra expenditures and down the line. So breaking it down into more, instead of numbers, into the graph format, this is the trend line, or these are the trends for the three there. You can see in 2021, we see the purple showing up, and that's our CIP. That's where you see the general fund dip that back down and start to stabilize. We're looking at our historic tax capacity values. So tax capacity, you just read as tax base, and what's that, that's been doing over time. So it's been going up since 2017, as we've had more homes built, as assessed values have been adjusted. So between new construction and what's been going on, that's been going up over time. We had the big increase in 2023, you can see there, just with the sales of homes. And with the way assessed values work is the assessors look at their arm-length sales of homes in the area, the comparables, and then they make adjustments as part of their process. So when you had home sales going for above what valuations were, they started adjusting those in there. And since we had that big bump in 2013, we only saw a moderate increase of about 1.82% in 2024. So that's our graphical form of what the tax base has been doing since 2017 to 2024. And then the third component of that trifecta is our tax rates. So for tax rates, just for those out in the public that may be watching, there's, there tends to be a little bit of a misconception. You hear a lot about tax rates or mill rates, and cities do not set those. Those are the product of what cities really do, is which we establish levies. We levy a certain dollar amount that is then taken from the tax base in the form of property tax payments that then funds the city. So your tax rate, in very simplified format, is your tax levy divided by your tax base gives you your tax rate. It's a, it's a product of that formula, not necessarily something that you set, and then you get the money for. So over time, the tax rate has remained stabled, and you got to remember that numerator and denominator relationship between levy and tax base. So if your tax base is increasing, and if your levy increases at this proportional rate, you can see here that your tax rate will stay flat, stable. If you have one or the other, that moves in a different direction. Similarly, then you get the tax rate that changes from there. So from 2022 to 2024, as we're looking at, we see the sharp decline in the tax rate. That's a product of us levying less in 2024, but also the big increases in the tax base that we saw in 2023, if we take a quick moment to look at that. So 2023, even though we levied more in 2023 compared to 2022, the increase in the tax base, I would strip that, so the tax rate did fall. In 2024, we're seeing pretty flat, but our levy decreases, hence the tax rate coming down some more on that. So then, we take a look at a little bit of a comparison. It's not that there's a competition in this or anything, it's just that comparisons and where you're at. Shed some light on how you're doing as a city a little bit, but all cities are doing things, although we provide very similar services, where each city is at and where they're doing things makes a big difference on how much they have to levy, how much debt they have. If you have projects that are done and been done for a while, and the debt has fallen off, well, then you're probably not levying as much. Or if you have different services that you're providing to your citizens, or if your tax base is significantly different. Good example here in mayor, we tend to have mostly residential housing, where you would compare us with a Chaska or Chanasse, where it's a substantial industry and commercial base. So there's some variances in that to keep in mind as we look at this. But up here, I've got the 2022, 23, and proposed 24 tax rates for the 11 cities in Carver County, and what they've done over time. On this slide's probably a little bit more useful in that I've split them out and ranked ordered them according to year. So you can see in 22, 23, and 24, how the cities may have changed positions regarding who's had higher or lower tax rates. So a little bit of comparison there, just to see where things at. Again, not a competition, just where the chips fall between all the cities in Carver County. But over time, I guess to point out, we were sixth place in there, six, highest, sixth lowest, wherever you want to call it, out of 11, and in 2024, if finals hold true, this is based on proposed, but if finals hold true, we're looking from going from sixth to fourth lowest in the county. And not terribly far behind Chaska, let me add. So then, moving on to the 2024 budget information, we look at the general fund as part of this to start out with. We'll look at CIP and debt service as well. Referring back to the slide, just as again, a refresher on where those trends are going. How about specific notes on that? The general fund CIP decreasing by about $44,000, or a little over 9%. CIP dropping by 84,000, or almost 16%. Debt surface drops by 29,000 about, or just under 6% for a total of that 10.45 overall. Some major notes to talk about when, why the shifts is, is really overall, a big increase to LGA that we got, the state through their reapportionment, as well as updating of the formula for LGA. We are seeing about $95,000 in additional LGA of state funding that we weren't getting this year or previous years. So that certainly has helped. So when we get some of those increased revenues in other areas, then that means we don't necessarily need to have as high, we can lower our levy to compensate for that. The whole point of LGA, when it was created to, was to normalize some of those property taxes that out states had, or not out states, cities in their rural areas had to tax higher rates, whereas the metro cities having far more dense tax base didn't have to do as much. So LGA helps to normalize some of that. In the CIP, the reduction was in the streets CIP, that came back down. We had the one-time bump up this year to pay for the mill and overlay portion, or help with that, I should say. Didn't pay for the whole thing. Brought that back down. We had an increase to parks, adding an additional 25,000 there. The asphalt sidewalk replacement program, that which was a switch from the public works building funding up to this, and then added to it. And then the addition of the general capital, which affects the general fund, because that monies was still being housed in the general fund, but we moved that out into a CIP fund where it ought to be, similar to the other areas we're planning purchases from. And then from the debt service, we have a reduction in the levy supports, the 2017 A-bond, which was a big part of why that dropped off. So in looking at those three categories as a whole, as part of the total levy, it's about a third apiece those account for roughly. When we look at budget revenue specific to the general fund, we notice that taxes, that represents property taxes, shifts down accordingly, as we talked about. Licenses and permits went up, and that was the adjustment up on our, adjustment up on our building permits from 40 to 50, but then we had the reduction of our alcohol licenses, which we dropped in 2023, but we hadn't budgeted that drop, but we still did it. So we're counting for that here. Local government aids going up 91,000, the bulk of that being LGA, but we did have some, and other categorical components of LG, or local government aids, not LGA the state, but other ones that dip down. So overall, up $91,000. Fire contracts, that 13,000 reduction, that was because in our general fund budget, there was a fire department code for fire truck debt service payments that was in there. And as part of the contracts, part of that funding about the 13,000 is payments from the townships that go towards the fire truck payments. So what we did is, the expenditure is now housed within the 2015 A-bond fund, which is a 300 code, not a 100, for the general fund. So fire contracts, that bit that was supposed to go towards those debt service payments, that's being reallocated appropriately to match that. Since the general fund no longer has the expenditure of that, that's now in the debt service fund account code. And the other, the other increasing by 17.5. Made a note on that. On the other category, that's increases to charitable gambling that we receive from the mayor baseball club, that was lagging behind. A little bit of an increase in the tower rent that we get for the tower right outside, and then increase in community center rentals was another big chunk of that. Part of that as well. So that accounts for the 17.5 increase there. So that accounts for the 5.59% general revenue increase from there. So if we break down the categories into a pie chart here, taxes, property taxes fund 40%, LGA 45, so 85% of our revenues come from taxes and LGA, which comes twice a year, in June, July, and then November, December. And the remainder is split up about 5% apiece between fire contracts, other, and licenses and permits. On the expenditure side of things, we split them up into the four categories of general government, public safety, public works, and parks and recreation. General government went down slightly, that's a little bit of shift of wage distribution towards utilities now the general fund. We did have the community center capital line item that got shifted out of the general fund and into that CIP category that we talked about. This also does include the EDA appropriation as well. So that is part of that general government. Public safety going up 46,000 over last year. That is due to the one-time pair expense for the fire department, because our investments took a hit. Well, the state board of investments, investment portfolio took a hit, and as, since we're part of that, through the fire department retirement, they passed along part of that loss to us and said, you owe us about $39,500 for 2024 to make up for that. So that's the bulk of it right there. The remainder of that is just general increases to expenditures for fire department and to building inspection. Public works, that went down. We removed some of the, that's also where we removed some of the capital expenditures and moved it into the 435 CIP that we're now funding. Parks and recreation is up 22,000, but half of that is anticipated expense with the splash pad going in between utilities and a little bit of maintenance repairs on it, as may be needed. And then the rest of it is that general park increases in costs of things. So the pie chart of the split of the categories there, general government about 39%, public safety 31%, public works at 19, and parks and rec at 11. Shifting on there, take a look at the capital improvement plan and debt service outlook. These are far more straightforward. This council, you've seen this in other forums in the spreadsheet that I had, the levy comparison, and I pulled the figures from here. So you can see the fire department, streets, park and recreation, asphalt sidewalk replacement, the general capital, and then the public works building. As you can see there, the public works building shifts up to become the asphalt sidewalk replacement. That hundred grand goes to 125 to help include costs in there. General capital, that is the combination of the community center capital improvement line item, and then there was one in public works that gets combined in there, too. Parks and recreation, council approved an additional $25,000 for 2024 and beyond for additional projects, and then another 10,000, well, it goes down, but then when we were balancing out the remainder in the budgets, an additional 10,000 to go from the 100 to 110 on there. The debt service outlook here, we have some final payments of things in 2024. The last payment for the sewer bond is in 2024, so that'll then drop off in '25, and then in the 2015 A-bond will drop off as well. So that'll just leave us with four issuances remaining there on out. You can see we got, overall, it goes down, but the idea, you have the 2021 A-bond, that was the fire station, that starts to ramp up. As you can see, this year it went up, but the idea is that we were debt laddering several things to try to keep that as stable as possible. So over time, it does decrease. That's our graphical outlook of the trend for debt service, assuming we had no debt during those years. A little graphics of how your tax dollars spend. So if we split up a dollar, about 12 cents would go towards general government expenses, 10 cents would be towards public safety, 6 cents towards public works, 4 cents towards park and recreation, 33 cents would go towards capital improvement plans, funding that, and then 35 cents would go towards debt service. That's what I have for my presentation. Any questions from council or from public attending?
Any other questions? And we have none from the audience. So with that, then, do we close the public hearing?
Yeah, it's just over at this point.
All right, with no other questions then. And Nick, there were no emails or any other documents that came in that need to be for the...
Nope, received nothing on that order.
Perfect. All right, with that, then, we'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 202337, adopting the 2024 final levy and 2024 final budget.
Motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion?
So one, I just want to thank staff, the entire staff, all the department heads for working on this. A lot of work went into it. Thank you to council for the meetings, all the work sessions to get where we got. But thank you, Nick, for everything you did on this.
Thank you very much.
Very easy.
That, I'll look for a motion to approve. Oh, we did?
You know, we just have to go.
Oh. Thank you. I got sidetracked. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
It's happened, I guess.
Oh, my goodness. All right, with that, then, let's move to the proposal from Bolton and Menk for Trails and Sidewalk Implementation Plan.
Thank you, Mayor. This is related to the asphalt sidewalk replacement that we've been talking about over the course of the last year or so. And this is the trail that runs through Coldwater Crossing and down into Hidden Creek, that was built 20 so years ago, and it's now getting into some rough shape in some patches. So the idea is, we were looking at ways that we could go ahead and get that replaced. We had, what was currently talked about is, as you guys saw in the levy, putting away money each year that can be used to replace the worst sections as much as can be done, and then over time, you will eventually get the whole thing done. Those conversations shifted a little bit when I started seeing some solicitations out there for potential grant funding that may be able to help pay for, no guarantees, but may be able to help pay for parts of this project. And that's when I get engaged Bolton and Menk, because I knew that, know they have a grant servicing division tied to transportation, and this is some of their bread and butter work that they do. So asked them to put together a proposed scope of services to assist with this. A lot of these, like the DNR grant I've done before, but with these transportation grants, they like to see plans and specifications related to sidewalks, pedestrian ramps, things of that nature. They want to see in community engagement pieces, and Bolton and Menk has done a lot of this work, and it's just some work that is just outside of my scope of expertise as a city administrator, and falls really into that engineering category of things. So that's what we have before us, and then I will turn it over to Dave here to talk a little bit more.
Yeah. I think that covers it well. You know, this, again, this is something we've been talking about for a while. And so as we start looking at possible ways to fund this, one of the things that we're going to need to do if we're going to pursue some funding is just kind of have this package together. We've got information in various spots with the comprehensive plan, some of the map, some of the high-level cost estimates we've done. We're trying to pull that together in a little bit of a tighter package. The community engagement piece of this is something we've also talked about, is we have this need out there, but we've never really engaged the public to find out what are their priorities, how do they view these sidewalks that need to be replaced. We've talked about a concrete versus replacing with blacktop. So if we're going to get serious about pursuing some funding, moving this forward, it would be appropriate to engage the public and have that, as well as with some of the funding that we may pursue, they're going to want to see that kind of engagement in those applications. Cost estimates we've done to this point have been very high level. Again, the intent of this will be to focus our attention a little bit, make some prioritize things to be a bit, a little bit more specific about what the costs associated with those improvements might be. Lastly, one of the first things that's going to come up here that's included in this proposal is applying for a Safe Road to School planning grant. We've looked at Safe Road to School in the past, but this would give us some money really to kind of take a bigger look at what the needs are out there and pursue some, some planning specifically associated with that program. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Otherwise, be excited to help you continue this forward.
Questions for city engineer?
So as far as funding on this goes, proposed fee is not to exceed $11,089. Where the funding would come from, putting in the 125,000 into the asphalt sidewalk replacement, that's where this would come out of. So it wouldn't come out of the general fund, it would come out of the CIP fund associated with it.
How do we get the engagement from the community, or how do you?
Yeah, so if, what we would propose is a couple different things. One is to coordinate open house, where we invite people here to City Hall, provide them some materials, and kind of be pointed about some of the things we know, some of the things we're kind of asking their opinion on. That's one piece of this. Another one is having a web-based engagement piece where people can go online, kind of an interactive map, where you can pin a spot on a map and leave some comments about, you know, I know this is a problem area, or this is a link that's not there now, and boy, it would really be great if you guys considered putting something in. So getting some information through that, too, and then just soliciting anybody that wants to stop by City Hall and share their opinion with staff, or kind of just some of those informal opportunities that we'd have.
Is this for all the sidewalks in the city, that you would be putting this plan together, not just the two neighborhoods that Nick initially?
Correct. I mean, we'd look at it globally, specifically from a funding standpoint, we've talked about those replacements. But the other thing we've discussed is there's potentially some funding opportunities out there. When you consider you have the regional trail coming through town, when you're looking at making that more accessible to people, making, again, kind of zoom out, look at if you have some links that maybe don't exist right now, not necessarily a priority or something we've talked about, but if funding was available, and again, through that engagement, if that was something that we were learning from your residents that are done identifying some of those needs, we'd be interested in knowing that. And again, looking at some different funding sources that might be specific to just providing those more regional connections.
Because I assume, Nick, right, the, in Brad Hendricks's report, talking about a crosswalk at 30 and Ash, there's no sidewalks or anything there. So this would be an opportunity to look at that. If, you know, if we put in a crosswalk there, we should probably have some sort of sidewalks. It would be an opportunity, because clearly there's a resident that's concerned about it.
Right. And just as Dave said, even though this is, the funding portion is more focused on the asphalt sidewalk, the side, sidewalk, sidewalk, the overall plan, we want to take that view of, what do we want our sidewalk system to look at as a whole? We're not just being too parochial, just because this is what we're focused on. It's like, what do we, what does the community want this to look like in the future?
Perfect. Thank you.
And along with that, I think we've had some discussions on just taking an overall look. When a new development comes in or a new phase gets open, and we're saying, yep, we're putting sidewalks in on every, do we need to do that? Is there a need for that? Because sometime in the future, they're going to have to get replaced somewhere, and, you know, so we just want to make sure we're looking at it.
Well, like connecting fieldstone.
Yeah, yeah, we want to look at, make sure we have all our, all our connections in there, and some we may not need. But, yeah, and connecting fieldstone, I think, is a good example.
I feel that's like a broken linkage. There's, you've always talked about it, but how do you connect?
We took a little step forward with getting fifth We took a little step forward with getting Fifth Street, from Fifth Street to the Roundabout filled in there with that last project. But, yeah, you know, once you get to there.
There's really no safe route to walk.
Essentially have to use 62nd Street to cut your way over.
Right, and there's like no shoulder, so it is.
All right, any other questions for either the city administrator or city engineer? Hearing now, I'll look for a motion to approve the proposal from Bolton and Menck for Trails and Sidewalk Implementation Plan not to exceed $11,089.
Motion?
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. All right, Nick, we can move to the towing contract with R&amp;V Services and Towing.
Well, the city of mayor has had a verbal contract with R&amp;V Towing and Services to provide towing services when we have snow plowing operations. And we thought it would be a good idea to get that verbal, that verbal contract into more of a written form. So created a basis for the contract. I worked with Zach Stifter direct to make sure that the details of the towing is correct regarding scope of services, what we're looking at having here, as well as the fees, things of that nature. He's looked at it all. He's very on board. He would be here tonight, but the fire department is having a training tonight at a Monday evening, and he is the training service, or the training officer. So he is conducting the training, so he is pretty good excuse not to be here. But he looked at it, he stopped in this afternoon just to tap me and say, are we good to go for tonight, Nick? And I said, yep, I think we're pretty good to go on the contract for tonight. So we're just memorializing what we've got verbally.
Thank you. I'll look for a motion to approve the towing contract with R&amp;V Services and Towing.
Motion?
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Let's move to 2024 Contract for Policing Services with Carver County Sheriff's Department.
So I received the contract for policing services from Carver County Sheriff's Office, and it contains all the details. We talked about it, about financial changes in there. We're going from a .88 down to a .68. That was a little bit of an hourly difference. The 2023 contract was at 2080 hours for a full-time equivalent. And with the 12, changing to a 12-hour schedule, that goes to a 2184. So we're going from about 35 hours a week roughly to about 38 and a half per week. And that was based upon the workload analysis that the sheriff's office did to make sure we're right sizing our police services to what the workload demand has been historically. So that has been adjusted on there. We're going from about a little over $130,000 a year in 2023 to 118,560 in 2024.
Wonderful. Questions on that? Hearing now, I'll look for a motion to approve the 2024 Contract for Policing Services with Carver County Sheriff's Department.
Motion?
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. We can jump right into the ordinance amending the fee schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. So each year, we take a look at our fee schedule. Sometimes we make changes, other times we don't. This year, I sent it off to our various consultants, Bolton and Menk being one of them. Excuse me, John Anderson, our city planner, and then Metro West, our building inspection. And we also had staff take an internal look just to see if there are any other adjustments to be made. So the recommended changes that we're looking at here, zoom that in a little bit more, for the community center rentals, increasing the small group daily rental rate for residents from $75 to 100, for non-residents, 100 to 150, eliminating the open gym fee, just because we are implementing open gym, and that will be free, so we're no longer going to need to charge for that. And then damage deposit on both ends going up $25 there. We've seen increase, even though we're saving a little bit money on electricity, we did have approved the increase to the cleaning rates. And then the costs of the supplies for the community center have gone up a little bit as well. I don't think we've touched rates for a little while on this. We did some reformatting here in '23 on the whole list, but prior to that, I don't think there's been huge changes in what we've been charging. On that, under Animal Control, we've removed running at large nuisance, first through third offense and subsequent, because this is nowhere in our animal ordinance that says this is a fee that we can actually charge. So we need to go by what the animal ordinance says, because the animal ordinance doesn't have any language that defers to this ordinance. So the supremacy of the animal control ordinance would be this, which classifies it as a petty misdemeanor offense on that. So whatever the petty misdemeanor offense on that would be, as is charged out, is what would prevail in this case. So these don't even, these aren't even in effect, essentially. So those can be removed. Right-of-way permit for large utilities, this was simply moved to building permit fee to be in a better spot, since it's more related to building permits fees than it is to general service fees and miscellaneous. Going down additionally, for the building permit fees, Metro West came back. And for the very basic fees that currently cost 75, for plumbing permit fee, our plumbing changeouts, new home construction for each hair, each heating or air surcharge, re-roofing, reciting, re-windows, sheds, those things, they're recommending going from 75 to $85 on those. Then here, you can see the right-of-way permit was re-added back in to be in this building permit category. After that, a little bit of a language update. John suggested landscape escrow, just to clarify his charge on the building permit. And then we get down to utility rates. One thing we wanted to get included in here that it's been a standing practice for years, but it was just never in the fee schedule, is senior rates for utility fees. And it amounts to about a roughly 20% discount for 65 years and older. Now, you do, that's all residents within the household that have to be 65 or older, but then there also is income verification requirements as part of this as well in the application. You have to prove that you're within the region's low to moderate income classification, and those tables get updated annually. So they have to submit that information to prove they're in that income range, as well as being 65 or older to qualify for this. So we're not handing this out left and right. I think six or seven accounts out of all of them have the senior rate. But it's been a standing rate since Lois was around. It was just never reflected in the fee schedule. So we wanted to make sure we got that included and put in there. So we have that in there for consideration. And then under storms, sewer area charges, we have, as you can see up here, storms who are regular charges, the $7 per month for schools or churches, but no area charges included. So John suggested that we include that. And we put the, since the storm sewer charge rate is $7 per month, which is the same as a residential, the area charge is at 2650, which is the same as the residential, so mirrors that in the same respect. And then just removing storm here, just it's a redundancy of the word there. And that is it for the recommended changes to the fee schedule.
Any questions on any of the recommendations? Hearing now, I'll look for a motion to approve ordinance 242.
Motion?
Clarify, introduce the ordinance.
Oh, to introduce the, yeah, thank you.
Motion?
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing now, thank you for cleaning this up on a lot of this, just getting things cleaned up. It's going to go through these. With that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right, that will move us to the Earned, Sick and Safe Time Policy.
The Earned, Sick and Safe Time Policy required as part of the new law that was passed in 2023, taking effect in 2024, is here before council at the regular meeting. We looked at this at our last work session. Weren't any changes from the work session, so now we have it here for final approval.
With that, I'll look for a motion to approve the Earn and Sick Safe Time Policy.
Motion?
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. And we can jump right into the wage adjustment for compost site attendant position.
Thank you, Mayor. The Personnel Committee met to review some of the wages for our non-full-time staff. We looked at from each year, and one of the wages that they looked at was for the compost site attendant that was hired in December of 2021, originally hired at $15 an hour and hasn't been adjusted since. The committee discussed that due to good performance and how well he's been doing out there. The committee is recommending that his wage be adjusted from $15 per hour to $17 per hour, effective 2024.
All right, any questions with that? Excuse me. Hearing now, I'll look for a motion to approve the wage adjustment for the compost site attendant.
Motion?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. And last but not least, city administrator contract amendments.
So the Personnel Committee also met to talk about some amendments to my contract. These tend to be more clerical and cleaning up the contract really than any substantive changes, I would call it. So under Section 2 Term of Employment, removing the effect of October 4, 2022, that refers to my start date. Now that I've been here a year, that language is no longer really needed as we continue into the future. Similar with Section 4, removing that effect of October 4, 2022 language. The next section where we start looking at things refer, comes in the paid time off area. And a lot of this language, the old language referred to when I started and how I would accrue up my PTO since it was the first year, but since the first year is now over and done with, a lot of this no longer really applies. The new language mirrors that I was credited with five years of service upon date of hire. But then it just refers to that I will accrue PTO. My accrual, my cap, and my carryover are the same as is enjoyed by other full-time city staff. So it puts me at that same level as them. Regarding PTO, I'm sorry, I should have yellowed this. I apologize. This section right here, I am sorry. Go down to Section 10 for Professional Development. We have the removal of some language there. And the language after, which should be in yellow, again, my apologies, is the new language that goes into there. The concern I had with this is for attending all other than non-ICMA, non-MCMA, I would need to come to council for every conference seminar that I would attend, whether that be for ABDO or Ellers or even some MCFOA type of stuff. By contract, I would need to come up in front of council to actually get that sort of approval for what is really routine type of stuff that a city administrator would attend. So the language in there just cleans that up. It says, "Employee shall be allowed other such reasonable registration and travel for professional and official meetings, conferences, seminars, and occasions adequate to continue the professional development of employee and representation of the city. Employee shall use good judgment in his outside activities, so he will not neglect his primary duties to the city nor abuse absences from office for such outside travel. Requests for participation in any of the above occurring outside the states shall require city council authorization to attend." So in-state stuff generally good to go. If I'm proposing to go outside of the state for any reason, that has to come in front of city council for explanation and approval. And I believe that was the, that was the, those were the entirety of the changes to my contract.
Clarification needed or any questions? I'll look for a motion to approve the amendments to the city administrator contract.
Motion?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. That will take us to city council reports. Councilmember Wagner, anything to report on?
I have nothing.
We had a pretty successful tree lighting, I believe, and just want to thank everyone and put their efforts, the Parks Board and everyone who was involved in it. I think it was a success, and a lot of people showed up. So thank you to everyone who showed up and made it a success.
Weather helped.
Weather helped.
Yeah.
No snow.
Councilmember McNeely?
We just had a personnel meeting, and we discussed everything that we talked about in our meeting tonight. And I also wanted to say that I enjoyed the tree lighting. I love the new tree topper that Public Works constructed, and their new switch for the countdown was really, was a lot of fun. And for the Watertown Mayor Choir, or whatever they're called, came and sang some Christmas carols and Santa and Mr. Claus was there. So if you missed it, you should come next year.
It's a good turnout. Councilmember Halt?
I have nothing.
And I did have one Personnel Committee meeting also, which Nikki touched on, and we covered everything for tonight's meeting. So with that, we will not be having our second December city council meeting, so we'll be meeting in 2024. So Merry Christmas to everyone, happy holidays, and I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned for 2023.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.